Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our town council meeting. Would you please rise for the presentations?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, the religious stance, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no bounds.
Thank you, everyone. Good evening. We're going to start out with the treasurer's report for last month.
Okay, we are now in the 11th month of our 12 months, 92% of the fiscal year. We've received about 93% of our operating revenue and we've spent about 81% of our budgeted operating expenditures. The one thing that I want to note is if you look at our streets and roads, capital expenditure, we've only spent 8.5% out of the anticipated $415,000 this year, but that's because we just completed up most of the street work. So we'll be getting all those bills and they'll show up in the coming months. So that that'll get us pretty close back to our target levels. That's it. We look pretty good.
Does anyone have any questions?
Hi, Joy. Can you hear us okay?
Yes, I can.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Great. Todd, we'd like to have the town manager's report. Good evening. Oh, you're actually on mute.
Evening. Sorry about that. I'll review some of the or highlight some of the key staff activities over the past month, many of which will be discussed this evening. With respect to Bethesda Market Park Development Project, staff attended meetings related to project coordination, design, and traffic studies that are related to the development. Also reviewed the presentation for the June 18th Community Meeting on the new park design. We've communicated with MCDOT, the Department of Transportation, and Purple Line officials about the status of the town's request to modify the fencing of areas along the Purple Line alignment adjacent to the town in order to enhance residents' privacy and safety, those along Elm Street. Unfortunately, we haven't received a revised estimate from the Purple Line officials yet and their contractors. So we'll discuss that later, how to proceed. We've assisted with reviewing and analyzing state legislation and proposed county initiatives related to multifamily attainable affordable housing. And we are have scheduled a June 13th public forum. That's tomorrow night on this issue. Staff also, along with council members, met with state delegates to review proposed clarifications to state law related to municipal regulatory authority. We submitted an MML legislative action request regarding Governor Moore's Housing Expansion and Affordability Act of 2024 that was passed by the General Assembly, and invited planning officials to attend the long-range planning committee's June 20th meeting to discuss with counties' growth and infrastructure policy. All those I've just ticked off just now will be discussed in more detail later this evening. Staff also attended a meeting about the Capitol Crest and Surface Trail, and we scheduled a town council briefing prior to the July 10th meeting on this issue, which will start at 6 o'clock. Communicated with Corso Chevy Chase about their tree removal inventory and permits and as well as site safety issues. It looks like we're on track. Our arborist is on track to review the tree inventory and their necessary permits over the next few weeks. I doubt it will come in front of the council in July, likely in September, but that is well within their timeline for achieving resolution of that matter. We have discussed with council members and others over room vegetation policies and enforcement issues, which will be discussed later this evening. We completed spring asphalt and concrete repairs, continued to manage park, town park and waterway improvement projects, including Zimmerman Park renovations and Cookland Run stabilization, and continue to work with the town still engineer on plans for stormwater management improvements on Leland and Woodbine Streets. And we've also coordinated with the Public Service Committee on several proposed traffic safety and intersection improvement projects, one of which will be discussed tonight, and we provide a project to support to town committees.
Thanks, Todd.
Sure.
Yeah, a couple of comment and a question. First, I wanted to compliment you on the, Dave, with your oversight on the quality of the new paving that's gone in. It's really good. It's top notch. It looks very good and good speed bumps and speed bumps. I know you still have more work to do on Meadow, but what you've done so far is really, I think, very well done. The other is on Corso. Do we have any better timeline of when we think they're going to be able to pull out their permits and actually want to start construction?
Probably about a year from now, I would say, or maybe possibly a year from from May. So we're talking, I think, early spring, early to mid-spring next year is what I've, the latest I've heard from Grant Epstein.
Okay, so not not the end of this year, which is what they initially said. So more in line with what we thought than what he had initially proposed. Okay. Just wanted to make sure we're on the radar screen for negotiating our agreement with them, the construction agreement, which I guess is something that we'd proceed in the fall. Is that the general timeline for that?
I would anticipate that that will be the time when we would do that. I, we had discussed reviewing the county's construction management agreement and using that as a template or that we would add to for our our purposes of construction management agreement solely with Corso. And I don't think that's probably going to be in the works probably until early next year is my guess.
I'm sorry, what won't be in the works till early next year?
Construction management agreement.
Okay, so we could put, that doesn't really have to be in place till the first few months of 2025 is what you're saying, anticipating construction beginning sometime in the spring of 2025.
That's correct. I think construction management agreement, and Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe their construction management agreements are are done as one of the last items after permits are done. So it depends if I'm when the permits are pulled and when the permits are issued, and then the construction management agreement will follow that, if I'm not mistaken. But I can try to see if I can talk to Grant and get a better timeline for that.
I just want to make sure we're not jammed. That's all, that we have time, because it could be a process and we may have to get resident comments. I just want to make sure we can.
Probably would make sense to have a discussion about what kind of public input you want, how many meetings you want as part of that. So we can make sure that we let Grant know and get this.
Right, okay. Good, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Joy, do you have any questions? Todd, are we still on track for the Zimmerman Park redevelopment to be completed by the end of the summer?
We're on, we are, Dave can give an update. We actually have to modify the plans a bit based on the East West Highway crosswalk that's being installed now. They've installed some of their signalization equipment where our stormwater swale that we intended to install is was planned. And so we sent over the plans, the plans for East West Highway crosswalk to our engineer for him to evaluate how the, our plans need to be modified in order to accommodate that equipment. But Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, we're still on track to get it done by the end of the summer.
Yes, first and I've been talking with our contractor to do both Zimmerman and Cookland Run project starting, I believe, in August. So they'll probably slide into September, but the timing of that is really based on ensuring that we have survival of the size of the plantings that we're going to have to install. So we'll make sure that we sort of finish and get the planting ready when the temperatures are a little bit cooler.
Okay. Thank you. We'll now move over to public comments. So other than the public hearings that are taking place later on, the floor is open to any resident that would like to make a public comment. So if you wouldn't mind, I don't know if that microphone is on, activated or not.
I'm Deborah Volmer. I live on 44th Street. And I think it's wonderful to live in this town. There are a lot of basic services. We have the Lawton Center next door, so we have a lot of opportunities for recreation. What's missing? What's missing is that those of us who do not have pools in our backyard or belong to a club that has a swimming pool have no convenient way of getting someplace to swim. There is the Bethesda outdoor pool. It's a long walk for most of us. We don't all drive. Taxi cabs, in my experience lately, have been becoming more and more unreliable. We don't all have smartphones and do Uber or Lyft. I had this idea, and I presented it at various forums, that maybe the development, either the park development or close to the Farm Women's Market or the 4H project, that at one of those two places, there might be a swimming facility open to town residents. I think I regretfully say that my limited efforts in that direction have met with without much of a response. And even if it were to happen, this is, this is not something that would help us right now because both projects are a long way from being completed. My suggestion is that there be some sort of a transportation service, either on an on-call basis or on a schedule, where town residents could ride, get catch rides from the Town Hall Lawton Center, from this facility, basically, to the Bethesda Pool. Now, I'm advocating for myself because I know the health benefits of swimming. I know it's great exercise. I'm recovering from hip replacement surgery, but even if I wasn't in that situation, swimming is just a great exercise and refreshing. And there's not a whole lot else one, it can really be tempted to do in the heat of the summer, but swimming is wonderful. I'm also thinking of this as not just for a few senior citizens like me, but also there are kids who are home for the summer who have not yet, even if eventually they're going to get driver's licenses, they're not all driving yet. So this could be a service to the whole town. I'm thinking if the town itself, or perhaps in cooperation with the county, could set up some sort of a van service available to town residents and and maybe not limiting it to town residences, but others in this, in the general area of the town, that this would be both a wonderful service and it would serve our residents and provide us with this opportunity to get some relief from the summer heat and exercise. So that's my proposal. I, I, I don't have any ideas about budgeting for this or whatever, but I throw this open to the council. The ball's in your court. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah. Are there any other comments? I'd like to provide an opportunity for those on the online as well. Okay, seeing no others. Public comments is closed, but I believe we have a couple of suggestions from our council members. Rich, please. If you could turn on your, thank you.
Thank you. I I just want to give a shout out to one of our town teens. Tara Prakash just was appointed the inaugural statewide poet, youth poet laureate. She also happens to be the Montgomery County Youth Poet Laureate as well, but I just wanted to acknowledge that the the teens in our neighborhood do do things that are quite impressive, and she's one of our impressive youths.
Thank you, Rich. Indeed, very cool. And Bonnie, I think.
Just very quickly, I ask for a resolution of thanks to John Beal, who served for many, many years as a board member of the Chevy Chase Fire Department and did so very quietly, but absolutely with great dedication. And he's just had to resign quite suddenly because of health issues in his family. But I think we ought to just thank him for that. I ask for a resolution of thanks for all his good service for behalf of the town. If I may.
What do you all think about that? Yeah.
How about voting on it? I move that we have a proper to John.
Anyone second?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Did we want to do a resolution as well for Tara? Okay. I don't know what's all involved in that, but we could certainly look into that. We'd have to vote.
Yeah, right. Do you want to propose a resolution?
Propose that we, what do we call them? Just a, well.
Resolution.
A resolution for, for the recognition of our town, one of our town teens, Para Prakash, as the inaugural Maryland Youth Poet Laureate.
Second? Can you hear it audible? Okay. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. There you go, unanimous. Wonderful. Any other business before we move over? Okay, great. So we're going to move to the public hearings. The first, we'll have two tonight. The first one is a contribution of town contribution of $10,000 to Wonders Early Learning for capital improvements here at the Lawton Center facility. It's open to anyone that would like to speak on behalf or just their comments about this potential contribution. And those online as well are also. Sure. Thank you.
I don't have any, any kids of my own, but I was once a kid. And again, I'm Deborah Volmer, town resident on 44th Street. But I think, you know, if it's, if it's, if it's within the budget, I I'm all for it because, you know, the kids are our future. They're, we need, we need to support them. And if there are infrastructure needs for this center, I think the town ought to go forward with that and support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Please.
Hi, everyone. Anne Patterson. I live on Elm Street, town resident. And I have two students at Wonders currently at the location right here, and I 100% support it and think if we could even give more, I would do that because I personally went there as well growing up, so I'm an alumni of Wonders. So I have deep, deep roots and I couldn't think of a better place to send my children when I moved back to the town. So brother and I both went there and my mom walked in and said, oh, my God, it looks the exact same when we took you there. So it definitely needs an upgrade. And so whatever we can do as a town to support them. And it's great for all the other residents. We all get to know each other. It's a social thing as well. It brings community throughout the town. So I have some great friends that I've met through Wonders that live in the town, and I think it would be a great addition to a help fund and support them. So thank you.
Thank you, Anne. Please.
Hi, I'm Joanne Hurt. I'm the Executive Director of Wonders Early Learning Extended Day. And I want to say, first of all, thank you for considering this. As a nonprofit, we really use much, as much of our revenue as possible to invest in our staff because we really are committed to high-quality programming. And so 80% of our annual budget goes to compensation and benefits for our staff. We want our, we believe that this, this type of care and education is so important that we want our educators to be able to have a living wage and have professional careers doing this work. And the quality indicators really show that it's the connection between the educators and the children, those relationships that are built are what are sort of foundational and key indicators for future success. I will tell you a little story. My kids went to Leland, Wonders at Leland, and they are 32 and 30 years old now. And when my son was in college, he wrote me a note and said, I realize now that the relationships that I have with my professors and my teachers that I had through high school and all the way through school started at Leland with my two-year-old teacher, Shitagdi. And he said that that relationship was so important that it's always been important for me to be connected to my teachers. And and I thank Wonders for that, which was very sweet. But it is, it just shows that we, we, the teachers are so key. And because we are a nonprofit, we don't have extra to be investing in those learning environments, those physical spaces. So this grant would really make a big difference. So thank you for considering it.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, public comments are closed. We opened this up to council discussion. Any thoughts? Happy to chime in myself. Go ahead.
I strongly support this. I think it's a very good activity. One of the things that we've always focused on and have to focus on as council members is that anything that we, any money that we offer has to have connection to town residents. We can't just give money away to any cause. And so there's clearly, clearly a very important nexus between this town and Wonders and seeing it do very well here and thrive is really important for the community. So I certainly support this.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Yeah, and I just wanted to reiterate that the, that that $10,000 isn't going anyplace except into the Wonders Center here for capital improvements. And it's not, it's not fungible. Right? Yeah. Yeah.
Joy? Yeah, we received a.
I'm also in favor of funding this grant. My children were Wonders alum. They formed lifelong friendships at that place. And still remember their teachers there and their experiences there. We're very fortunate to have such a high-quality facility in our area. And I think for parents who do have children of that age who live in the town, I mean, this is, it's a fantastic tool. And I think it makes great benefit to the families who can avail themselves of those services.
Thank you, Joy. Yeah, I was going to say we received a number of comments from residents. I think more than 2025 comments came in. Large majority in favor of this contribution. I would ask, though, just for consideration for my colleagues, if it's possible that with this donation, we also ask that there's a letter coming back from Wonders that says, hey, it's the the capital improvements have been completed, just to kind of have that ticked and tied. So just for consideration of that. So. Good. Okay. Well, I'm happy to entertain a motion. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Joy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous. Thank you very much. We look forward to seeing the, the end stage. Yes.
You'll have to give it, give us a walkthrough.
Yes. The ribbon cutting. How long, how long, how long do you think, like, would it be ready by the time September, the New Year begins or? Okay. Oh, just wondering. Okay. Please send a note to the town office. I think that would be lovely. I'm happy to, happy to do that. Happy to do that. Thank you. Thank you. All right. So we now are turning to our second public hearing, which is a tree removal appeal at 4427 Ridge Street. I don't know who represent the, thank you, sir. We also have our town attorney on the line. Ron, if you would like to do the opening ceremonies, if you will, and then we'll dive right in.
Sure. The hearing will start with the applicant's presentation. The applicant's asked to please come up to the microphone and state your name before speaking. The staff has entered a report into the record summarizing the application. That report's not a recommendation one way or the other, but rather restate what's in the application. The application, I'm sorry, the applicant can note that the council has had the opportunity to review the application materials in advance. So you need not restate everything in the application, but please feel free to address the council as you wish. After the applicant's presentation, the council will have an opportunity to ask questions of the applicant and staff. Then anyone else who's here who wants to comment in support or against the application will have the opportunity to do so. The applicant will then have the opportunity for a brief rebuttal on those issues raised by others. Then the record will close and the council will deliberate and then entertain a motion to approve or deny the request. A decision will be written. Please note that the decision's not final until it has been written. So you will need to wait for that before getting a permit if it has been approved. With that, the applicant may proceed.
Good evening. Thank you very much for the introduction, council.
Speak very closely to the mic.
Okay, better?
Yeah.
Okay, good. My name is Jeff Farrell, Vice President for Terra Innovations. Thank you very much for the time to walk through everything with you. It's my understanding, okay, there it is right there. Got a brief PowerPoint. I understand you've reviewed most of the information. I just wanted to walk through a couple of things very quickly so that you can not only understand why we're applying, but maybe the overall intent of what we're doing here. Because they are sort of dovetailed together. If you can hit the next slide. So we are recently acquired, next slide, please, property at the corner of West and Ridge. I think it's probably familiar to a lot of people. The property's a little bit rundown. Required it several months ago with the intent of of redeveloping that home in its current state, basically putting an addition on, putting a second floor, cleaning up the front, getting things properly within the setbacks, and then constructing a new home on the fronting Ridge Street on the right-hand side of the image that you see. What you're looking at here is, and the concern and why we're here tonight is the, is on the sort of the south side of that image. There's an X right where the driveway comes in. We've got a traditional straight driveway plan, which is pretty normal for the community, normal for the neighborhood. The issue is that tree with an X on it, which is in the right-of-way, in the public right-of-way, and it's too close to the driveway. So you can hit the next slide. We've met a number of times with town staff. They've been incredibly helpful, guiding our team. CAS engineers has been guiding us as well, going through, this is a report that we got back from the arborist. Trees one through six were considered to be trees that needed to be paid attention to, significant enough. Trees five, two, and one were intended to be saved, and we've been issued a permit to remove tree three, four, and six, either too close to the property line, too close to a building footing, and they were not, I guess, maybe of significant character to worry about keeping. The tree that we're concerned about is tree number two. Next slide. And we were not granted a permit to remove that, which is why we're here tonight. So we went through and met with staff a number of times. You can see in that bottom right-hand corner that 10 and 12 feet are like the reasonable setbacks if we were to retain the tree. Meaning we could build the driveway at least that close. And the idea was to do a curved driveway around. Excuse me. Next slide. This is the tree as you see it from Ridge Street. So you can see it's really tight to that neighbor's driveway, which is right on, or a little bit actually over the property line. And so we would need to either put the driveway effectively on top of that in parallel with the neighbor's driveway or 10 feet to the left of that tree in the center of the lot. Next slide. That's just a clean version without all the extra information. Next slide. And so we did go through with our engineers and with the town, a number of alternatives to try and accomplish. And so we did go through with our engineers and with the town, a number of alternatives to try and accomplish the goal with, you know, by leaving the tree there. Options one, two, and three across the top. We're all intended to try and create either a curved driveway around the tree or option two and three to be able to get a turnaround so that you're not backing down a ten-foot wide driveway with a curve. So one of the town ordinances requires there to be a ten-foot wide. It's going to be ten-foot wide. So doing a curved driveway will require further action at this level, which we would come back. And that's a waiver to the ten-foot width. So you can see where that line is across the front. So we would be required to do a waiver there. And then in option three, trying to do a turnaround in the back would require some sort of a waiver to the stormwater requirements in the back of the lot. So we tried to explore a number of different options. Quite frankly, it's just, you know, six one way, half dozen the other. It just, it's very difficult to navigate a ten-foot wide driveway backwards. So that's why we're, we're trying to do the straight drive. You can hit the next slide. So the other reason, and so we, we did have our pre-pack meeting, pre-application meeting with the community, met with all the neighbors. We, we hosted one with the town. We actually hosted a couple after that for members that couldn't come. The overwhelming sentiment in that meeting was first that folks were seen to be happy with the improvements that were going to happen to the existing house. Both the landscaping, the streetscape, the improvements to the house. And then second, major area of concern was parking on the street. Both during, uh, when the house is complete and more importantly, during construction. So these are two options that are one for the straight driveway, one for the curved driveway, which we believe we can create actually a larger parking footprint for the construction of the home on the left-hand side. If the tree is taken, I can probably park six cars in the front of the house because I've got trees to the left of that red box, but to the right, there's nothing. So I can get a larger off-street parking during construction. Things like dumpsters, work vans, deliveries would happen on the property rather than off. Using the curved driveway, we effectively have, we can do a little bit more than the driveway itself, and we would use that as a construction entrance. So those are, again, and I just want to be clear, we can build the house either way. I just feel like it's a long-term benefit to not have the curved driveway. From an overall streetscape, you get a bigger green front yard, and we get better drainage. And again, we still have to come back to get a variance for the curved driveway. So, next slide. So in addition to, you know, obviously asking for that tree to be removed, we have no problem with trees generally. We're quite happy to replace. These are just two locations that we picked. I think we talked to the town a little bit, talked to their engineer a little bit of, you know, coming back after construction's done and planting a few more in the right-of-way. That would have to be sort of managed or guided by your arborist because it's in the public right-of-way. It would be off our property to replace those for shade trees along the road. We picked these two locations. If there's other places across the street, down the street, that are more important, that have less coverage, it really doesn't matter to us. Understanding the importance of trying to keep that tree-lined street, we'd be willing to replace the, the one that we take with two additions. Next slide. I just put a spacer in here. Sometimes, you know, and I, I want to be able to put it back up if it's possible. If you want to see what the streetscape looks, I mean, we're talking about a tree, but you may want to see what, what the houses are going to look like as part of your decision. Maybe you don't weigh that. I do have slides for that if you're interested. So you can see what the transition would be from the old house to the new house, and then the new house by itself. You can keep advancing whoever's driving. And, you know, really public information, for information for, for council as well. The image on the top is the front door view. So this is on west of the house as it exists. It's hard to tell because there's not greenery and all, all over in the fence, but that's what it looks like. The renovated house is on the bottom. So you can see, if you kind of like zoom out a little bit, you can see that we're using basically all the same profiles, the same chimney, the same entrance. And we're just adding two with a second floor, staying within the current setbacks for the property. Next slide. And then here's the ridge side of, of, of the top house, again, being existing and the bottom house being the addition. So again, staying inside setbacks, just trying to improve what's there while keeping some of the character for, for the existing house. And then next slide, two more. This is the new home, so being placed between that home and the, the, the next property on Ridge. This is the front door. Next slide. This is driveway side, so facing the existing house. Not, not the one we're doing the addition on, the other one on Ridge side. So this would be where the driveway would be coming through to the backyard. Next slide. This is the other side facing the house that we're renovating. And next slide. And backyard, intended to have a patio, this is a separate garage in the back corner. Potentially a turnaround if we have to work through some stormwater changes, depending on the driveway configuration. So I just wanted to give that for context because, I mean, sometimes you talk about a tree without seeing the overall picture. And I know that some information was not in our application. So I wanted you to know what is sort of the overall picture was. I'm happy, that sort of concludes my prepared remarks. I'm happy to answer any question you have. Again, you know, we, we look at it, you know, as an opportunity to sort of keep the streetscape going the same way. I'm worried that doing a curved driveway today may end up being that there's a curved driveway, and then there's a replanted tree in five or six years. Because if you, I don't know if you've been there, but the driveway on the right-hand side of the tree is right up there. And then we would be putting another driveway on the other side. So I'm concerned, long-term, short-term, the tree would be fine. Long-term, concerned about making these kind of steps to save the tree, but I'm just happy to answer any questions you may have and get through the process.
Joy or anyone, do you have any questions right now?
Thank you for that. When I looked at the property, back, I guess it's between the, the empty lot and the existing home.
Yes.
But back, there's a very large tree, I think some sort of three trunks. Is that the mulberry that's discussed?
It's actually a red maple.
Red maple.
On the West Avenue property.
Oh, that's on the West Avenue property. So that's not going to be affected. That will still be-
joints where those leaders come down. So it's very unlikely to-
There is a mulberry, tree five.
Okay, I was mistaken. That, that's, that's the one I was thinking of. Because that's, that actually is quite a large canopy tree also. But that one has to come down. Okay.
There's a large red maple and then a large silver maple. Those are both hazards.
Okay. One other question I have is, when I think about these dilemmas of where you put driveways and trees, was there any option to put, and I understand your view about a straight driveway, preferring a straight driveway. Was there any option to put the straight driveway between the existing house and the house you want to put up? In other words, on the west side of the house instead of on the east side of the house?
Yeah, well, if it's possible to put the, the site plan back up. So the way the lot's configured, it's, you know, it's a square, it's a rectangle lot, but then it's got a little addition in the back.
Right.
So the only way to get like a detached garage, just trying to use that land is to put the driveway on that side. One of the things that weighs heavily into this is drainage and stormwater. So we've got to have open space to be able to accomplish that. We're really close to needing a waiver for that in the front with a straight driveway. We definitely will need a waiver with a curved driveway. The back, we feel good the way it is because I've got a very large area behind the patio where we've got a wide section of lot for like a, like a buried French drain for stormwater management. We did look at it. It just doesn't really fit to be able to have parking.
The garage would take up too much space in the backyard.
Wouldn't fit at all.
Wouldn't fit at all. Okay.
Yeah, just because of the way that back one sort of, the back corner is deeper on that side.
Okay, thank you.
Can we put up the, uh, the site plan? What, from your PowerPoint, if that could be brought up again and all?
You went to that first page.
Uh, the previous one. Let's see from where that is.
Keep going.
Okay. That one is fine. Yes. Okay. So I apologize in advance for all these hypothetical situations, situational kind of questions.
Okay, we've been through all of them too.
Canopy trees mean a lot to residents in this town. So I want to make sure that every single possible avenue is explored. When I looked at the site plan, obviously there was a little bit of curvature from, and, and it's unclear to me whether the, the lot that's to the right of this property, if their property line actually kind of comes into the forty-four twenty-seven property line.
It's not the property line. It's actually their driveway.
Their driveway, actually.
That, that curve line is their driveway coming over the property.
So they've overstepped. Okay.
So we'll have to correct that.
When the-
Well, if we do a straight driveway, we'll have to correct that. Either, either putting a curb or just marrying them up so that nobody, you know, I don't want to cut their driveway off if they're too narrow already. So we should probably marry them up together.
So that leads to my second question. We do have a number of shared driveways in town. Granted, it's grandfathered in terms of, of when now that construction used to take place. And I didn't know if there was a conversation with the neighbors next door to look at not so much the private driveway part portion being shared, but the public driveway portion.
Sort of veering off once you get past the right-of-way.
So it's a little bit more, um, you know, brought in so that it, it could save the tree. However, you know, both residents, or sorry, both, both owners or whatever would utilize the public driveway to access ultimately their own private driveway.
Yep, uh, understand. I'm not sure if it's permitted anymore to have a shared driveway. Maybe it is.
Well, that is something we could do a variance for. So I'm just, I'm just wondering in terms of saving a tree. That's, that's wrong.
So I guess the question would be, you know, when we get past the right-of-way, number one, if we're allowed to do it, whether or not it's something that you can waive or, or amend. I'm not sure if we, so you see the horizontal black line? Just north of the tree?
Yep.
Okay, so I believe that is the end of the public right-of-way. Great.
Yes, that's what I'm understanding as well.
So two things. One, the neighbor would have to go along with it because we, once, if we did a shared public, it would be inside of the public right-of-way. And then we would have to have a shared private for a portion of land. And then come over. Definitely, definitely, because otherwise you would be in, inside of the tree distance. So, yeah, so we'd have to get quite a, quite a distance back to get past sort of like that, that top green line and then come in and up. I, I can't speak for the neighbor.
Sure.
They would have to give us permission to build on their property.
That wouldn't, would, that wouldn't alleviate your problem of backing out of that driveway though and having to make a turn to get the home. It would be difficult to do that.
Well, the three-point turn is occurring on the backside.
No, there's no three-point. There's no three-point turn on this one. No.
We showed, we showed that as an option. We can't do that because it goes into the stormwater management pond.
Understood. Okay. I heard a three-point turn and I-
Sorry.
Okay. Okay.
We also, we also looked at fully front yard parking. We looked at, which, which, you know, no drainage, no nothing, no green. We looked at strips instead of a full driveway, looked at driving strips. Again, when you do the turn, you can't put the strips in with the tree. And if you do the turn, definitely can't do that on like a two-foot wide, uh, driving strips.
The, um, if you put on your two replacement trees, I don't know what the, we have a kind of a maximum height that we would want to transplant in there because if you do it much bigger than that, then the tree doesn't survive very well. So, and would you go, you'd be amenable to going to the maximum sized tree that you could get into those two spots?
Within, uh, you mean at the day that it goes in? Or you meaning-
Well, just if the arborist says you can put this big a tree in here, the maximum size of it. I don't, you know, not, not a one-inch caliper on the top. But if he says you can put one with a three-inch or whatever it is.
I would say within, within a reasonable cost range. So in my experience, first of all, I agree with you. You don't want to put like a one-inch caliper, a little sapling. And depending on the species, it could take between five years and 20 years to be useful. I understand, yeah, I understand that. There's a exponential price when you go larger. The price doesn't scare me up to a certain point. And candidly, I don't know what species we're talking about, so it doesn't, it kind of, it kind of depends. More than happy to plant a bigger tree as long as I'm not committing to like a $30,000 tree. Right? So, well, well, when you, when you get into like a six-inch caliper tree, they, they get pretty-
I guess I would, I would say, would you agree to the maximum size that our arborist would recommend to be put in that area?
Yeah, I'll caveat that by just saying I, I want to be able to approve it in, in price. But I would think that over a certain caliper, you don't want to transplant it.
No, we don't.
So, but you, it's sort of like, I used to, I used to write conditions for things like this and working in county government, like can't do a one-inch sapling. It's got to be at least like six foot tall or something like that. As long as it's reasonable, yes.
On the West Avenue side, it's a sidewalk there, so it's a pretty restricted planting area, so we're probably
Right.
Better. On the Ridge Street side, it's a sidewalk, potentially for the lark tree. But just with our ability to read a four-inch caliber tree would really be smart.
Yeah. For you guys.
Dave, did you get a microphone? I didn't hear what you said.
Three to four inch, three to four inch caliber trees is essentially what could be accommodated, given the sidewalk that exists on west.
Yeah, I think it really also, just from experience in arborists in here, but it really also depends on the species. So, you know, you want to, we want to pick something that's going to grow fast. I have this at my house. I live in a neighborhood, unlike this, where the neighbor got one that was planted by the locality. And I don't, I don't remember the species, but it's about this high. I planted one of my choosing that was on a list, and it's, you know, fifteen, twenty feet high two years later. And then the other tree is still here. So just, you know, we want to pick something that's going to get big, fast and be strong and-
That's why we would condition it upon our arborist.
Yeah, yeah. I would find with it as long as I have the ability to pull the reins back a little bit.
Yeah, one other question I thought of. We do encourage sidewalks in the town generally. And there isn't, you know, there is a sidewalk on the north side of Ridge and suddenly stops right at that property. Have you considered, and when you had your meetings with the residents, was there any interest in having that sidewalk continue to west?
Yeah, it doesn't stop at this one. It stops, I think, two more houses down.
Two more earlier.
And they did bring it up. They said, well, would you put the sidewalk in? I said, well, I can put, with the town's permission, I can put a sidewalk on mine, but I'd have to extend it down several houses. You know, I-
Yeah, as the town has looked at it, and actually we got a call from one of the neighbors. So to complete that sidewalk as a continuation of the sidewalk that stops, there would be pretty extensive grading and also the removal of two or three other canopy trees in the public right-of-way that-
Never mind. Okay. Not going there. Just raising an issue.
Tread lightly.
Uh, Joy, do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
Did she say no?
No.
I couldn't tell. Okay. Any other questions here? All right. I was, yeah, I was, I just want to make sure the questions-
We've not received any correspondence about the request from any member.
Dave, I'm not sure, I'm not sure Joy can hear you, so you're going to have to stand up.
We've not received any correspondence specific to this variance at the town office. Okay, great. So we'll open it up for public comments on this variance. And those on the line as well can I'm not seeing any hands. I'm not seeing, okay. Great. We are closing public comments on this. Now open for council discussion. Whoever would like to start.
I'll throw in my two cents worth. This is actually a very tough issue because it's a beautiful tree. There's no question about it. And that's going to take a generation for another tree to replace it. In my, now my ninth year in the town council, there have been four other variance requests regarding trees that I recall anyway. Two of them involved trees that were also really gorgeous, and the homes really could not be built without their coming down. And the council approved for them to come down. Two other trees, the developers requested the entire tree come down. But we did not, we were not convinced that was necessary. And we authorized instead only for a single branch to come down in each case. And that was all that was required, and the rest of the tree stayed. So just giving that as background. The most recent example, I think, was just about two or three years ago, when we approved a tree to come down. And actually, very similar circumstance on, on Thornapple, right before the path, where the tree was right where the driveway had to go. And we had the same kind of exploration. Is there any alternative? Could we do anything to somehow keep the tree? And the workarounds were very similar to the ones that are talked about in this application, which require, you know, sacrificing a lot of the front yard or a lot more drainage issues. you know, sacrificing a lot of the front yard or a lot more drainage issues, or potentially some safety concerns of people trying to back out of a driveway. Um, when, when, uh, they have to do a curve. The only, the only thought, so I, I, I only thought that I came up with, which, uh, Irene, you put in my head. I appreciate your, your thinking about it. Is whether it's some way the driveways could be shared, not with an abrupt right angle, but some sort of very gradual slope, which of course would mean that there would have to be more merging of the driveway earlier, if you will, further north, uh, in order that the person backing up from the new home would not have to go through a right angle, but it would just be a very slight angle. And I, I guess I, I, I appreciate the creativity of that. What, what concerns me is that I would be wary as a council of our, in any sense, putting pressure on neighbors to make decisions. I think they have to decide to do that on their own. I mean, if they, if, if they determined that that tree was really special and they wanted to cooperate to save it in that way, I, that'd be great, but I'd be reluctant for us to go down the road of a variance proceeding in some sense. Asking, and we obviously could not mandate it, but I wouldn't want to put pressure on neighbors about that. I think they have to decide that. So I, I feel, and I say this with great reluctance because it's a beautiful tree, but I, I, I really can't see there's any real practical alternative here. I, I understand that where the, where the garage goes because there is that nice little nook in the back, which is obviously where a garage would go. I appreciate people living in that home wanting a backyard. I appreciate their wanting a front yard. Uh, minimizing the amount of hardscape that has to go in. Um, I, I just don't have any really good alternative and I, I therefore at this point, barring what else my colleagues might say that could convince me differently, and I'm certainly open to be convinced. But my instinct is that regretfully I would, I would agree to the variance.
Yeah, I, I did have one. I, it is a beautiful tree. I went up there today and look at it. It is old. And as I looked at the, the arborist information that was sent with the thing, uh, the lifespan for a tree like that, I think was between 80 and a hundred years. It's probably 50 years old. So I'm, uh, I'm, I'm more inclined to have him plant two new trees to give us more canopy 10 years from now than it, and, uh, just as a, uh, I'm inclined like you Barney to, uh, I, I couldn't see any other real alternatives in terms of the placement of the driveway or anything in the sketches. So I'd be inclined to approve it. With the condition that the arborists, you know, the arborists select the trees that need to be put, put in there.
Thank you. Joy or Stephanie?
I think Barney and, um, and Rich have really stated everything, you know, quite well. It is really disappointment to lose a tree like that, but, um, you know, I just don't think it would be a look in front of the new, in front of those, you know, both of those homes to have a very strange driveway curving around. So, um, if we can get two new, uh, approved trees out of it, I think that is fair bargain.
Thank you, Joy. Stephanie?
Um, yeah, I, I went over and looked at the tree too, and it's, it's a really, really nice tree. And I, I hate, hate, hate voting to take down trees like that. I mean, I would, I would love to postpone the vote if you have not already had a conversation with the neighbor about whether they would be willing to create some kind of a shared driveway. I don't think we can mandate it. I mean, it amounts to an easement. That would have to be negotiated financially and everything, but if you'd be willing to have a conversation with the neighbor about whether they care enough about the tree to negotiate something like that, I, I would just personally really appreciate it. And I think that a lot of town residents would as well.
Thank you, Stephanie. Um, yeah, I, I'm, I'm inclined to, uh, agree with Stephanie here. The tree might be old, but our, our arborist considered it to be a very healthy tree. Um, and I am always concerned about precedent in these types of situations. And as we are staring down, um, the prospect of multifamily housing in the town where driveways are going to become more and more of a question, um, potentially in front of, of the council, future councils. I, I really want to encourage as much creativity as possible before taking down what is a healthy tree. Um, so I understand it's just the two of us that feel this way. Uh, however, I, I'm not inclined. If we were to vote right now on this variance, I am not inclined to vote, uh, to in agreement for it. Uh, if there is an opportunity to speak with the neighbor, uh, again, this wouldn't be, um, strong arming anyone, but there might be a, uh, a resolution at play. Uh, I know personally, because I sign permits, uh, that when there is a, um, there's, there's a construction project here on Elm Street. Oh, you know what? I'd like to do my side of the driveway and upgrade that since you guys are building a new house. Let's do it all at the same time. So you never know what could come out, um, of a, of a conversation like that. And again, not forcing anyone, but if there is a way to do something, um, that encourages more, um, community, great. If not, then certainly the council can come back and we can absolutely discuss it. We're meeting again in July. So.
Can I ask, let me ask, uh, if, if you were, if you were willing to have a discussion with that neighbor about a shared driveway, and you would have to come back, we, we would not be able to hear that. Until when?
Well, we're meeting again in July. So depending on how quick.
So if you could do it before the July meeting, we could, we could, we could take another, take a vote in, in, in July. Does that do anything to your schedule for?
So I, I, I don't worry about months, a month here or there, but I do have concerns about the idea. And when you do that, you've got to consider what driveway they have left. Um, there's not a lot of street parking and you're effectively taking a three car driveway and turning it into a one car driveway with a garage. Uh, their garage is not as deep as ours, meaning like, so the garage in the house that we're proposing is, is pretty far back. That's the site plan that we looked at. Their garage is not that far back. So if we've got, and these aren't the right numbers, but just from a ratio standpoint, if you've got a hundred feet of driveway from the street to your garage door, and I'm going to ask them to give me or share with me on their property, 50 feet of that, that's a pretty big ask.
Yeah.
With, with, with no.
Otherwise they're blocking your ingress and egress if they're parked the whole way out to that.
Because it's not, yeah, it's not just the part in the right of way. It's that probably three times that because you've got to taper over.
Right.
That would be my concern. We did meet with them at the pre pack meeting. They were there. They were very engaged in the process. Did not express, and do you tell me if I'm wrong, did not express any concern about taking the tree in favor of having like a wider parallel driveway, uh, which is what this would end up being. We'd have to repair or mend their, their slide over. That's the only thing to consider is they're, you know, they're already on our side. So their driveway is already pretty narrow, but do I have concern about waiting a month? Uh, no. Do I think we will, it will change anything? I, I don't. Uh, if I was them, I would never, I would never agree to it. It's probably why I'd never asked because it would creative, yes. But if it was my driveway, I would, I would never agree to it. Um, so I'd prefer, uh, I mean, I'd prefer a vote tonight based on plan. If, uh, the council wants us to talk to the neighbor, I'm happy to do it. I don't know that I can come back up here in July. We may have to postpone further. Um, we've got, um, things on the agenda in July. That stuff I've got to do in the state. Uh, but, uh, we'll take direction from you.
Well, the first, I, I think the first thing would have to be for you to actually be able to design something for them to look at, to say, this is what we're talking about. So you'd, you'd have to do that before you'd even have a discussion with them. And I'd, I'd be in, based on your description here of what it is right now, it would be you, and maybe, and if you could show those designs to Dave beforehand to see whether it's even a, whether it's a good idea, you could actually design it that way.
Long-term, I'm not sure that even if they were amenable to it, I don't know that we would be okay with paying whatever the freight would be for that. Uh, it's going to be a curved driveway. We would probably do the curved driveway on our property. I have long-term concerns about a shared driveway. Access getting in and out, neighbor fights, concerns with whether or not we're restricting their driveway. I would, if I was going to not do a straight driveway, I think I'd want to do it on our property so that we're in control.
What, um, oh, sorry. I'm sorry. I forget what you had said about this. Is the, is the new house going on the, on the footprint of the old one or what?
No, there's a, there's a renovated house on the footprint of the new one. And then there is a new house on the empty lot next door. Built in tandem, they'll be built at the same time.
So why is, uh, just to be very intrusive here, why is the driveway situated on the right-hand side of the house rather than the left?
Sure. Uh, if it's possible, we could put the site plan back up. That'd be probably helpful. And just while that's happening, the, the location for the garage, because it's sort of like a, uh, it's almost like a Tetris piece. It's a rectangle with an extra piece in the back that's sort of nicely fits the garage within town setbacks. The only way I can get there and keep stormwater management requirements for the backyard. Yeah, yeah. Okay. So or to have the driveway on the right-hand side. I can't get to that little keyhole and I can't do stormwater management by going around the other direction.
So, so why, what, and unpack that for me a little bit. Because it's, it's not, it's the same hardscaping. So what, what, what changes about the stormwater management?
You've got to have enough square footage of suitable soil to do that. So like even the front yard today. Because there's, there's town requirements and I believe in David correctly, if I'm wrong, I think the county's requirements are more stringent or less ones with stormwater.
Two different processes. So we're more restricted in some areas.
Okay. So in any event, it, it, if I move the stormwater over to the right-hand side, keep the garage where it is, come with the driveway over on my side. I can't make the radius turn to get back to a garage. And if I move the garage from that keyhole area into the backyard and just leave that sort of keyhole area alone, move it into the backyard, then I don't have enough footprint to meet stormwater requirements because I'm putting a garage there. So it's sort of the only way I can treat.
I see.
Yeah. It's the only way I can treat stormwater coming off the roof in the front and the back. Is sort of the orientation that we've got, which is why we landed there. And I'll tell you, we've, we've shown you three or four options and we've talked about a couple. We've gone through a significant number more than that, uh, even to the point where we had just, you know, no garage and just a parking line in the front. That was a suggestion that we talked about with town staff. Um, so.
So if I, I could go, I, I never, you know, the, the idea was, was very limited if any, private driveway sharing. So it, it, when I look at this drawing, for example, which can be put on the screen, um, just shows the, for those online, just shows the.
You want to show the screen for the?
And you have two parallel private driveways and the, the secondary one has the apron that, you know, kind of goes out there. The idea was to kind of share, share the public side of it, not the private side of it. And you were talking about like tapering it, making it look curved and, but I, I didn't even go to that direction.
That's the one. If you could stay right there. So, um, and I'm just going to walk, can I just walk back here and point? Yeah, please.
Town arborist, this is the safe distance box from the.
That's what we need to then go back.
Here.
Right.
Prefer me to get a radius that I can turn, you're going to taper. I've got to go, this is, uh, uh, this is approximately 18 feet. I'm going all memory. So from here to here.
I understand.
The runway distance. And then I've got to go that almost like a little distance back before I can make a left-hand turn to taper. And then I've got to taper. I can't, I can't, you know, so I've got to taper. So I'm going to be.
Right.
My driveway line is going to be like here.
Understand.
And I'm going all memory, but I believe that the garage was home is right about here.
Yeah, no, you're, yes, I, I completely concur. I, I'm now debating the clearance off of that, that tree there not being an arborist, like does it, does it need to be that big? That you cannot do anything, especially, sorry. Especially because there is a portion of the other driveway that, that kind of comes over already into that, into that space.
Yeah. I, I don't, I don't disagree with you.
Yeah.
I don't disagree with you. And we, we went through several iterations with him and Taylor spoke with him a lot about trying to get that down as tight as we could. Yeah. And that's as tight as he was willing to go.
The, the tree trunks on that tree are well beyond, you couldn't, you, he wouldn't.
They're under the driveway already.
He's not going to let.
One of the big long-term concerns that I'd really, like I, you know, I hesitate to bring up, but we talked about it prior to this meeting and I, my biggest concern is that, let's do that option, right? Okay. I'm going to go to the backside and I'm going to dig in a driveway right up against there. Or I, I go with option two and we do our curved driveway around. And either one of those are going to bring concrete and digging closer to the root system. And my biggest fear is like, and again, I want to be very clear, like we're okay with doing a curved driveway in the front. I don't think it's ideal. And we are going to come back because if we're outside of the driveway requirements, so we'll end up back and saying, you know, I need a variance for the driveway with. We're okay with doing that. I, I don't think it's a good long-term choice. But I'm okay with it because I think in 15 years, no matter what we do, I think that tree is probably going to come down because if we run a taper up top, we're getting closer to the tree. If we run a curved driveway around, we're getting closer to the tree. And it's a very big, very beautiful, very old tree. And I think no matter what we do, we're going to compromise the root system a little bit. So my biggest fear is that like, we do all this, which again, I want to be very clear, we're okay with going on a, you know, it could be unorthodox, but a curved driveway in the front. And, and doing that, but I worry that like in 10 years, we're going to have a weird curved driveway and no tree. And then it'll be, you know, a tree coming down between the power lines and a new house. And that's, that's just a worry, but long-term, uh, you know, someone's going to buy that house and they'll deal with that. Um, and I'm, again, I'm okay with a curved driveway. We prefer the straight one because I think long-term it's a better choice for the look of the street, but.
What is the driveway variance that you?
So there's a, you. So the way they measure that is not sort of perpendicular to the edge. It's parallel to the building restriction line or basically the street. So even though, and I'm just going to walk back here.
Even though this driveway is 10 feet this way, town code measures it that way. So I'm more than 10 feet. And so I go there. It's 14.2. Now, uh, we, we remember this and, you know,
there is a tolerance in which we can get that down to, and it can be potentially administratively approved because it's under a certain percentage, but so, someone will have to waive that if we do the curved driveway. But again, I just want to be, you know, you can see the distance here from that tree. And this is the arborist sitting down.
And it involves us like, um, we've got air excavating.
You sort of scrape down and then you almost air excavate around the roots so that you don't cut any incidentally. Like I've done that. Uh, we do that in, in Florida on a couple of things where we try and save trees that you have to like actually compress air excavate, and then you can expose the roots and then you can deal with them as you see. But, uh, you know, that's, these are the realities that we're faced with, I guess.
Hey, let me, let me add just my own personal thoughts about shared driveways. I have a shared driveway.
Yes.
And it is a, put it quite bluntly, a pain in the butt. Because, uh, the parking at the end of the driveway where we share the driveway is always being, somebody is incurring onto the other person's space. Luckily we've got good neighbors and it's, it's okay, but it is a pain in the, pain in the neck when it snows. Um, you know, somebody's got to clear the driveway and it's usually me. And, uh, so they, they are, they are just not an ideal situation. And, um, I, I can't imagine if I was, uh, that, that homeowner there agreeing to a shared driveway, much less one that's 20 or 30 feet into, onto my, you know, onto, that you have to incur 20 or 30 feet on, onto my driveway. So I, I mean, I, I hear you guys, uh, concerned about. doing this, but I, I'm, I'm still, I'm still of the opinion that I, I'd rather, I'd prefer to new trees and, uh, and have a driveway that's safe, I think is gonna be safer for the residents. Not requiring them to make any turns on their property. So that's, I'm still, I'm still of that opinion.
Thank you. Okay. How do you all want to proceed? Do you want to vote on this this evening? Do you want a postponement?
Enjoy. I'm gonna be interested.
Absolutely, Joy. What are your thoughts?
You know, I, I agree with Rich. I don't know, looking, looking long-term, um, you know, we shouldn't be doing private. Looking at if we ever have, we've got, you know, where we're talking with it, who's building a duplex on a similar property, which could very well happen. I think it's in the interest of the town to ensure that properties have adequate on-street parking. Property is in an area that's close to the edge of the traffic there. And I just think it's not ideal. That's why we have variances. It's, it's not to lose a tree like that, but on stances, I just, uh, I think this is probably the best of, of a lot of not great options. I think we should vote on it.
Thank you.
I think so too. I would like, um, in any vote, we have, one other thing we've learned from first time we agreed to take down a tree is to only allow it to take, be dropped down when it absolutely is necessary and the building commences. When my first town council meeting nine years ago, we approved taking down another, another Pin Oak. And then the house didn't come down for four more, or longer than that, six years? So, uh, yeah. I want to make sure that we don't take down the, if we vote to take down the tree, it should not come down any sooner than it has to come down.
So we can make, we, we could make a two conditions. One is that it not, it not come down sooner than it has to come down. And secondly, that the arborist chooses the trees to replace.
It'll be two, two canopy trees, right?
And we have some other standard conditions as well. To the extent you impose reforestation, we typically require a two-year warranty period for replacement trees. And that warranty obligation runs with the land. We would record a decision in land records. And so if that tree dies during the warranty period, it's got to be replaced. And any replacement tree has the same two-year warranty. And then we, we typically also say that the trees have to be planted within 12 months of completion of the project in addition to the conditions that you've noted.
You want to do a motion?
I, I, I will move that we, uh, grant the variance with those two conditions. It'll be two canopy trees planted. And that the, uh, the, the tree that'll come down, only come down at the point that it must come down for construction.
Yeah, to, to replacement trees approved by the arborist.
By our, yeah, I'm sorry, yes, two.
And the additional conditions that are already.
Yes, I would, right, those are standard, yeah, that's right.
Second. Did you move that? You did move that, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Just, just one point of order. So in the past, we've required reforestation trees to be at least two and a half inches in caliber at the time of installation. Were we going to impose a larger requirement for one of those trees based on the discussions?
Yes, it's whatever the arborist says is the maximum size that can be planted in that.
Well, with a, with a ceiling, ceiling of four, four inches based on.
Brian, I think Tolbert can use his best judgment. It just says, as approved by the town arborist.
Yeah, yeah.
And just as a point of clarification as well, does the council want to say oh, the condition of the applicant only remove the tree when building permits are issued? Or not? It's a little vague about when it's needed to be removed.
So our, our standard condition is that it has to be removed within 18 months of the approval or the tree removal permit shall become void and it can't be removed until a building permit has been issued and work has begun on the project.
Okay, if that's standard language, that's fine. That's good.
But standard language, it doesn't need to be a condition of the approval room?
Okay. Well, it, it. Yes, but I think it was a part of the motion since the motion included our standard conditions.
I'd say.
Yeah. Second. And we were voting, right?
We're revoting, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, 322, it passes. Uh, the variance passes. Good luck.
Thank you.
Caroline, if I, is, would I be in order to make a brief comment explaining my vote?
Absolutely.
So I, it, it, it pains me a little bit to vote no on that because I understand. Um, I'm certainly not opposed to new builds in the town. I'm actually all in favor of improving the housing stock. And I'm all in favor of people being able to use the property they've bought to, uh, to their, you know, maximum quality of life. If it were not for that, however, if it were not for the keyhole there where the garage is going, I would 100% be saying you're doing a new build, put the house somewhere else so that you don't have to take down this beautiful old tree. But I don't, I'm, I'm not at the point where I feel comfortable enough given some of the multifamily housing issues that we are about to face in the town saying, well, you know, this is unusual. You've got the keyhole. You can't really, like, it's a, it's a new build. And I, I wish that there were a way to design it so that we really can avoid taking down some of the better canopy trees in the town. So I just wanted to go on record saying that.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Great. Okay, we're going to enter into council discussions now. Uh, we are on track. Uh, first up is Bethesda Market Park.
Thank you. Um, I assume you wanted me to speak to that?
Yes, please.
On, um, two different tracks, I guess, we typically cover this topic. The, um, on the legal side, the county and the developers continue to wrangle back and forth. They claim they're making progress. An issue that I reported on last time turns out to have run away. That issue was the county apparently asking that everybody else complete their negotiations on all their agreements prior to the time they would sign their agreement with the developers, but they, that's, that has disappeared. So that's good. Having said that, however, several key players are currently on vacation. Uh, and so we probably won't see another turn of the document, there won't be another turn of the document toward the back end of this month. And, uh, that obviously is still going to delay then the developers kicking off the actual design work because they still want to be reimbursed for the county portion of the garage associated with the design. On the other hand, we are continuing to make a good headway on the preparation of a presentation to the, to the residents in the Bethesda area, which will take place next Tuesday. And, uh, the landscape architects started out with a slide deck of something like 125 slides. And Todd and Irene and I have been on several calls to boil it down and we're now down to about 40, which is a definite improvement. Uh, and, but I, I think, uh, to speak for myself, I think the designs, first of all, will be very recognizable to residents. This will be very much in line with what they saw a year ago, March. Uh, but with the added water feature, which had not been on the previous plan. And with a lot more thought done to some of the different, uh, structural elements, such as what the shade stage area will look like. What the fountain, the, 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 the water fountain area will look like. And also, uh, what the place cape area will look like next to the dog runs on lot 10. Having said that, these still remain conceptual. These are not fully designed. Uh, and, uh, at the outset of the presentation, Irene will give a couple of minutes of remarks just explaining to everybody how the designs that are, are being seen assume the approval of the $5 million additional funding, which the town has has put forth in a plan of which we will be contributing 3 million if we could go forward with that. So we want to make sure that the listeners connect the dots of what these plans represent, which we hope they'll see as exciting, but also do cost more money. And that, uh, without the additional money, uh, we will have a park with virtually no amenities. Full stop. So anyway, that's the background for it. Uh, we hope it'll go well. Uh, it'll be a virtual meeting. We're coming out with a town crier tomorrow. Uh, maybe we'll even run another one on Monday. And, uh, we'll be asking for residents to comment as quickly as possible afterwards. Also, the, uh, the slideshow itself will be online, hopefully within a day or two days at most after the presentation. So residents who want to bear down more closely at it can, can, um, can, um, see that and study it without, you know, just having during the, in the presentation. Uh, the one other fact that I do want to bring to your attention that was new in our recent review. Recall that the, the underground garage can be accessed off Willow. So there could be some traffic on the, that we call this Wernhof. Uh, that will be right between the market and the park. We had thought that all of the truck, truck traffic would both go in off Leland and come out on Leland. So there would be no trucks on the Wernhof at all. But what the, uh, EYA said in a call just two weeks ago was actually, they had rethought that and felt that it might be necessary for some trucks to occasionally come in on the Wernhof. We express, A, our disappointment that we were not told. Secondly, said this is a, you know, very material change as far as we're concerned in terms of taking away from the notion that the Wernhof is essentially a pedestrian path between the, between the market and the, um, uh, and the, and the park. Uh, and, you know, it's a slippery slope to have more and more traffic on it. So, uh, all they've said so far is that they get it. They know that if there were trucks to be allowed, it has to be very restricted. But what that looks like and so forth, we still have to debate and review. But I just wanted to make sure that you are aware that was one issue that had arisen. I don't think there are any other surprises anyone's going to see in the slide deck. Uh, and I hope it's well received. And we hope that a lot of residents will, will look at it.
Yeah. Thank you, Barney. Any questions? Mark your calendars next Tuesday, online, 7 p.m. Thank you. The next item is on Purple Line, Capital Crescent Trail fencing and barrier improvements. As Todd mentioned at the, um, top of the meeting, we have, uh, yet to receive the revised estimate, um, for these, uh, for this change order, for this, uh, enhancements, privacy and security enhancements. And, uh, the original quote that was put in had some inconsistencies even from a county perspective. And, uh, so we're waiting on that. That was approximately three and a half weeks ago, maybe. So, uh, so they're well aware, um, that we only have one other meeting this summer to discuss this. And of course, we would need to have a public hearing. But first things first, we need to get the quote. So that's part of the reason why, uh, if, if y'all, we might all have to have a virtual meeting over the summer, depending on how this goes. But once we get the quote, uh, from the, uh, Purple Line Transit Partners, it's been signed off by the county's Department of Transportation. Uh, we will share that with the residents, so.
I mean, are we, pardon me, are we going straight back to the Purple Line people? Are we talking, we're still working through the county to get the quote?
The conversations with, um, is a contractors or whatever with the Purple Line, that's, that's who Todd has been in touch with. They promised last Friday, then we called Monday. Yes, it's coming today. We called Tuesday, it's coming today. So some, there's some delay that we're not quite aware of right now. Um, but hopefully soon, hopefully soon. Any questions on Purple Line stuff? Okay, the next item is overgrown vegetation regulations and policies. Uh, I want to thank, um, Todd and Dave for preparing, uh, a very, very helpful and thorough memo about the issue of enforcement of the town's overgrown vegetation regulations. Uh, as you saw from the memo, uh, there's a number of factors all at play. Not only with respect to inconsistency of, uh, sidewalk widths throughout the town. But then also, uh, with, with respect to some residents and treatment of vegetation and, and shrubbery and things like that. What's, what's one person's passable is not another person's, um, passable. And also it's totally in conflict with our existing sidewalk clearance policy. Uh, in addition to that, uh, town trees are also, um, you know, in, in some cases, not, not a lot, but in some cases are also infringing on this policy. So what we wanted to discuss this evening was, uh, adopting essentially what is the ADA standard, um, for sidewalk clearance, which is slightly narrower. Instead of 40, well, instead of, um, edge-to-edge clearance based on the driveway, I'm sorry, based on the sidewalk width. It would be 36-inch width clearance. And then, um, I believe six and a half feet or maybe it's six, 6.7 feet. And, uh, if we maintain, if we, if we make that our standard, A, it's a, it's a lot easier to communicate that because it's applicable no matter the sidewalk width around the, around the town. People will be able to understand that. Obviously, people are well aware of ADA standards in general and how, um, with other aspects of our sidewalk. Acts, the, just like the physical access of sidewalks and the, the bumpy stuff that's, um, installed. People are well aware of those standards. And it's, uh, it's just easier to communicate. The idea here is that if we were to adopt this as our new standard, couple of questions at play. It's a more lenient standard that what is presently a part of our ordinance and a part of our policy, which in and of itself, those two items, the policy and the ordinance are also out of sync. So we would work with staff to, to get that all tied up if, if that was something that we were interested in pursuing. Um, and then the secondary set of, of, um, considerations is around like the timing where we would be able to communicate with our tree clearance company contractor as they work their way through town, all of that. Uh, all of the residents would, would be notified accordingly and the trimming would take place after that, that 30 days notice. So first things first, how do we all feel about adopting a more lenient standard, um, specific to ADA clearance?
I, I think it's a great idea. Number one, it's, it's a requirement. And so we don't, won't have any, any, you know, it, it's not something that we're imposing. It's, it is a requirement. And, uh, I, I think that's, as long as we can reasonably enforce that, uh, I think it's a good idea. I mean, we haven't enforced the existing one very well, so. But it's clear and it's, uh, and it's, and it's, uh, defensible on our part. So I'm, I think it's a great idea.
Thank you.
I agree.
Okay.
Yes, I agree. It may be, it may appear more lenient, but in fact, it's not because we haven't enforced it.
Right.
Joy? Any thoughts?
I agree also.
Okay, so that's, that's good. We're, we're making progress here. Some question, some questions that have been posed, um, by staff. Assuming, which we are look going forward and adopting the ADA standard for, um, clearance. How do we wish to address any resident objections to trimming? So the idea is that we would send a letter, which was offered in the council packet, sample letter, which we don't have to wordsmith tonight, but if certainly if people have, um, wording suggestions for this letter, please send them on through. What if at the end of the day, uh, a resident is just raising an objection? We can certainly still enforce it. But please know that there, there still might be some, some resistance to it, uh, which certainly can be, hey, it's the law. We have to abide by the law and that, that's just the way the cookie crumbles, but wasn't sure if there were any other thoughts on that.
Here's my nightmare scenario for this whole thing. So we send out the letter and to, and we, we notify people, especially who we know have, don't meet the standard. And we say, look, you know, within 30 days, if you don't do something within 30 days, we're gonna, we're gonna do it. Well, some of those. Well, some of those people you know darn well are not gonna are not gonna trim their, and we're gonna do it. And then they're gonna come back after we've done it and say, we killed the tree.
Yes.
All right.
Another question.
That's right. And we've killed the tree. We've killed the tree. And so I just want to make sure that the way we had we we addressed the problem gives us firm legal standing at the end of this process. If they say, you killed my tree and it was a specimen XXX and it's worth $10,000, I want to be reimbursed for it, that we are on solid legal ground to to make that decision to trim that tree and to make the liability on their end, not on ours. So I'm just.
Yeah, absolutely. Ron, any thoughts about about legal liability in that case?
Sure. So case law generally provides that the town actually has the duty to maintain the right of way in a safe manner for pedestrian and motor vehicle use. So if a tree is obstructing use of the sidewalk or motorists visibility, the town actually has the duty to remove it. So I would not be concerned about liability if the town has provided notice to the neighbor that, you know, the tree is an obstruction and they failed to trim it back themselves. I would be more concerned about liability on the town's part for a failure to remove an obstructing tree. And you know, and and a motor vehicle collision occurs or, you know, pedestrian can't walk on the sidewalk and has to step into the street and gets hit by a car.
I mean, I guess the corollary question is, do we want to voluntarily provide any assistance to town residents if they if trimming a large hedge or whatever would would cut away all of the foliage and inhibit regrowth? My own feeling sitting here right now is I don't think we need to do that. I'm not even sure it's appropriate to do that. I if you've if you've let your hedge grow to that point, that exactly, it's your responsibility, I think. You know, it's they're pretty standard practices for keeping a bush of a certain size so that it doesn't get leggy and stop sprouting.
This is this is Todd. Sorry, I'm not on camera right now. But effectively, we are offering assistance in in doing that by doing it and not backcharging the resident for it. If they can't do it or are unwilling to do it within 30 days, we will step in and do it for them. So effectively, we are assisting.
That's a great point, Todd.
Yeah, and I it's.
And other communities might do a clean and lean where then the owner does get charged back, but.
I wouldn't recommend that.
The town is taking an amicable approach here.
Yeah, no, I it's the it's the one thing that sticks in my craw. I spent a lot of time in a homeowners association years ago, and we had the same problem, and we did charge back. It ended up being a nightmare trying to get trying to recover, you know, get money from people. And it was back and forth. I I think we have the ability in the town, thank God, to actually afford to do this trimming if people aren't going to do it. And we'll just leave it at that. And I don't think we need to get into the legal hassles of putting liens on people's property and so forth. So I I would definitely not offer any assistance upfront, but I would also not charge for the work that we've done.
I would definitely, I was glad to see in here that the town staff recommending that they also elevate the pruning of public trees while we're doing this, because I can attest that there's one in front of my house that if you're more than four feet tall, you have to duck under now. Yeah, so this will, every three years, the town, Dr. Feather goes and does the inventory of all the the public trees to figure out, you know, what needs to be, branches need to be taken off or maybe the tree. There's something going on. So this is a an event that occurs every three years and will occur. This is the year for that in 2024. What I like about this program is that it will kind of be a consistent thing that that residents will be able to just just know, oh, it's that time of year. And and they're they're working their way through the town. Is 30 days enough notice, given everyone seems to be out of town all the time? Or they're gone for the summer, they're gone for the spring, they're gone for the fall, they're gone for the holidays. So that is another little question that I have. I think it's okay, but I, you know, people come and go.
I I think 30 days is okay. My what I what I would add to the letter that we've, in addition to the letter that's being sent out to all the residents, saying that after 30 days, the town's contractor will be directed, after we've decided that we're going to trim somebody's property, trees on somebody's property, we should send a letter to them saying, we are going to, we are about to do this and give them another chance, but and notify them, you know, by the way, here's our date, we're going to do this. If you.
Like next week.
And if you want, if you want to do it yourself, please contact us immediately. But give them another opportunity to.
That's a very good.
Now, what's the word pragmatically, I guess? How how long does it take to get through? Is this is the town divided into eight sections or something? And and the tree guys go through one section in a week? What what's the logistics of that?
Yeah, I mean, I guess we need to get with our landscape contractor, who I've had sort of some preliminary talks with, I guess, once the council approves it to see, I guess, what resources they can give us and on sort of what timetable they can, you know, make their crews available. And then we'll have to make the program fit that availability.
Okay.
But if it, you know, it's much less administration intensive if we can just send them, send them down a block and say, clear the block to ADA. But if, you know, we're giving second notices and giving people a chance to to get it scheduled. And then we have to tell the group prune here, but don't prune here because they're going to do it themselves in two weeks. That's just.
I agree. Yeah.
Black and it's gonna cause more problems, I think.
Potentially, yeah. So so go ahead, Todd.
I agree with Dave there. I think we give them a 30 day notice to cure, and then we go in and act. I don't know if follow ups will be effective, and it will be a very spotty ability for us to clear sidewalks in that case.
Yeah, and giving them a second notice, I think, is fine, but allowing them to use that second notice to request an additional delay is just where it gets messy.
Wasn't suggesting that at all. I was, that was kind of the final notice, and then you're going to come the next, the next day. And I think it should be saying, you know, you should say in it, the contractor is scheduled to start these on this date. If you want to do your pruning before that time, go for it because we're coming through on that date.
Yeah.
So that's the second letter. It's not asking them permission or not to do it or to delay anything. It's just state, we're coming through, and if you want to do something within, before they get there, go for it.
Yeah, historically, when we've given people notice and given them additional notice, they still ask for extensions, and then we try to work with them, and it just doesn't ever get resolved.
No, that's not what I was talking about.
Well, but it's a good question about about those extensions, because here we're gonna, we're gonna pay for the contractor to come through, and they're not going to necessarily have the clipboard that says skip 4106 and then just keep going.
They won't do it if it's already done. They won't clear again.
No, because they've asked for an extension is my my.
Yeah, if we're not getting grants, that's, we're not fine. I just want to make sure that everybody understands that.
Right.
You know, they come to you directly and it's your neighbor and they say, oh, can you give me an extra two weeks? I've been out of town, I haven't been able to get it scheduled.
It's not what I was talking about.
How, let's say this evening, we say, go for it. How soon would this start? Because I do want to make sure that we do give enough lead time in the forecast and town criers. You know, this is happening, this is happening. So what what is that timeframe?
Yeah, it's probably, I'm actually out of town at the end of this month. It's probably we would start or get have conversations with our landscape contractor in the beginning of July and start getting letters out. You know, the first or second week of July, I would think.
And I, you know, Irene, I I think the first, our first step at this, it does, I mean, we, it'll be a learning lesson for us, too. So the staging of this over a longer period of time is fine with me. We ought to pick, you know, just kind of take the first step.
Take first section.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think initially we'll go slow because we want to make sure that the contractor knows what the ADA standard is, knows if it's of vegetation hanging on both sides of the sidewalk, which vegetation to prune to leave the clearance. So it's going to take a little bit of education and just some little bit of trial and error when we get it started.
It'll be interesting to see how many, how many town residents actually are affected by this. I mean, there are a lot that there may be some spill over onto the sidewalk, but it may be only a few inches and not a full foot. So we may find that there aren't that many that actually end up being violation.
Yeah, there's a few. I think it's going to be the the height is the one where you're walking down the sidewalk and you're dodging at this level, but I don't think it's unmanageable.
Okay, so for this evening, I mean, is it a motion? What are we doing for this policy? This is a council discussion. So are we allowing comments from the public? Okay, go ahead. You have to come up, though.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. My name is Howard Berkoff, and I'm actually providing this comment as Chair of the Public Service Committee. This topic was actually informally discussed at a public service committee meeting several months ago in the context of the Bradley Lane discussions. And not that you need any more motivation from the town council, but I feel obligated to give you feedback that the PSC would strongly endorse enforcement, strongly endorse enforcement of the sidewalk of the shrubbery. So there is strong endorsement for this type of proposal to enforce the guidelines and ordinance as you're describing tonight. So just want to leave you with those thoughts from the Public Service Committee. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, Howard. Great.
He's well schooled.
He is. But you're you're gonna get him. You're all good. All right, so let's put in a formal that we are going to, as per the the town staff's recommendation, we are going to implement a policy that follows the ADA clearance sidewalk clearance standards. We are going to leave it to the town staff to clean up the ordinance slash policy, whatever needs to be cleaned up and come back to the council accordingly. And I guess that that is the motion that we can all just kind of vote on quickly. Would anyone like to second it?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Thank you, Joy. Great.
Thanks.
Yes.
I guess one last question in the the memo is whether, I guess, while we're have our head tracked immobilized and we're elevating town trees over sidewalks, I'm going to go ahead clear very low hanging branches over the streets. The town code requires that private plantings and shrubs be elevated that hangover sort of the base of the curb. Do we want to address those violations while we're doing the sidewalk clearance at the same time, or just let those sort of continue with the force of the other way basis as we have here?
But the overhanging is still going to be the the six feet, seven inches. Is that what, is that still the?
Yeah, the landscape contractor is going to work from the ground, so they're not going to trim branches that are high above the street. So I guess the 14 foot standard that we need for for truck clearance. But certainly, you know, if you walk down the street, there are town trees that, you know, in cars are parked, they have branches that are, you know, at the roof level or, you know, low.
I'm sorry, so what's what is the concern about trees on private property?
These are public trees that we'll have elevated. The concern is bushes, shrubs, and other private plantings or plantings maintained by residents that overhang the curbs.
Okay, they don't have a sidewalk, they don't have a sidewalk.
But they there's a hangover so far, they go over the sidewalk and over the median.
What you're talking about is stuff that people have planted in the public area, even though.
Yeah, there's either no sidewalk or it's between the sidewalk or the curb.
And they throw in there some pomegranate or vegetable plants or whatever.
Oh, I thought you, I'm confused now because I thought I'll use my example of the corner of Leland and Oak Ridge. You know, John's got the shrubbery that hangs up over the over the, it's it's fine from ADA because it's, you know, he's got it cleared there and he's got it cleared six feet up. But the branches come over and overhanging stops sign there. So you would go and you would trim that. That's what you're, that's what I, that's the.
Yeah, you should probably aside, we probably would trim it. I know on Ridgewood, there's a house that has a hedge where there's no sidewalk. There is a sidewalk and they have plantings that, you know, pushing the street up on Leland. There's a very tall hedge that has branches that overhang the curb.
But that there's no sidewalk there at that that hedge on Leland.
There's no sidewalk, correct, but it's still a violation of our vegetation.
I'm only willing personally to talk about the sidewalk clearance, whatever it is that works for sidewalk clearance per the ADA standard. If it overhangs, it overhangs. I'm not really. As long as it clears the height. Does that make?
Dave, I think we'll handle that on a case by case basis, and we can, we can, we can address that in in the letter. And and I don't think the council has to decide that tonight. I think we should just address that administratively.
He is nodding his head. Okay. Okay, any other questions, Dave, for that? Okay. Next up, thank you all for that. I think that's a huge step forward. I appreciate that. Is the Leland Street East Avenue intersection improvement. And that will be a presentation by, again, Chair Howard Berkoff of the Public Services Committee. And we do have a resident here as well, if you'd be sir for coming.
Hello again. Good evening, Mayor Lane, esteemed members of the town council, as I drop my papers. Thank you for inviting me here tonight. My name is Howard Berkoff, and I'm Chair of the Public Service Committee. And I'm here tonight to recommend that the council schedule a public hearing to consider a proposed plan to modify the road alignment at the intersection of Leland Street and East Avenue and construct a new sidewalk and crosswalk on the north side of Leland Street, extending from the east side of 44th Street, as shown in the attachments that you received. This proposal comes in response to significant resident concerns over the years about vehicular and pedestrian safety at this intersection. The Public Service Committee over the last year has tackled this project and asked the town's traffic engineer to to come up with a proposed solution that would improve the vehicular and pedestrian safety at that intersection. We went through multiple iterations of designs that were presented to the Public Service Committee, and we incorporated many months of resident feedback to improve and take and to address concerns on the proposed designs throughout the course of the year. We actually started this project in the fall and went through numerous iterations over our monthly council meetings. The proposal as presented to you this evening will address the following. It will lower traffic speeds and increase stop sign compliance by modifying the shape of the intersection to make it more conventional. It will improve vehicular sightlines for vehicles turning onto westbound Leland Street or East Avenue from southbound Leland Street. Improve vehicular sightlines for vehicles turning from 44th Street onto Leland Street. And improve pedestrian safety by creating a safe crossing for pedestrians traveling along the north side of Leland Street to the east side of town and vice versa. If, following a public hearing, the town wishes to adopt, we could complete this project by the end of the year. It will take approximately two weeks and cost approximately $100,000. We believe that we can manage traffic through the intersection, maintaining a lane through construction, with the exception of maybe brief periods where we have to close for something such as paving and provide a detour. But we believe that that project would be manageable by the construction outfit. I want to extend my deepest thanks to the Public Service Committee, our town council liaison, Mayor Lane, who had provided significant support over the year. And I'd also like to extend my deep appreciation to the residents, one of them is present here. But there were multiple residents that engaged professionally throughout this process to help improve. multiple residents that engaged professionally throughout this process to help improve and get to a place where last, at last month's meeting, the PSC was able to unanimously endorse this proposal and enable me to bring it to you today to the Town Council for consideration. I will now pause pending any questions or comments.
I did, I did have, I did have a question. It was unclear to me from the drawing. You are actually going to be taking up the asphalt, the current asphalt street up to that new curb line, correct?
Yeah, yes.
So that's all going to be, that'll all be taken out. It'll be all.
Vegetation, yes, yes. Yep.
Yep. I just wasn't clear about that.
Yes.
And also I take it that the new sidewalk that's going in is almost entirely, it's entirely on the town right of way. And it looks like a fair amount of it is even on current, well, I guess the last part of it is on the current roadway itself, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
Yes.
Stephanie or Joy? Any questions? I want to thank you, Howard, as well for, there was a lot of hard work. We, we had more people come to the Public Services Committee meetings than we do to Town Council meetings. Very, very involved group. No, they're, they're, no, they, you know, they came to the table with legitimate concerns and open mind and, and flexibility to, to kind of work through it together. Joe Cuthro and Dave really above and beyond in terms of, I think we went through seven iterations, seven different options when all was said and done, perhaps seven and a half, we'll see. But this represents a, a huge improvement in line of sight, vehicular line of sight, as well as the ability to add a new sidewalk for those residents that are on the other side of town and addresses just some stuff. Now, obviously, as you extend outward, like if the ring, it keeps extending outward, there are other improvements over time that can be made. But just focusing on this intersection, a lot of work was done. So thank you for your leadership, Howard, as well. So the next, unless there's discussion or anything, I think the next step would be to, to think about a public hearing for this. My question to you all is, would we want to schedule something in, in July or wait until September? As we heard earlier, that we might be facing the Corso trevances as well in September. And yet, if we were to do this in July, this work might even be scheduled before the school rush. So we have to see. I don't know how that would work. So just trying to get your feel on, on that, if we wanted to proceed towards a public hearing for it.
I mean, I, I think you should go ahead and proceed. It sounds like the most affected stakeholders in that immediate area are pretty clued into what's going on and on board with it, more or less. I mean, we'll find out. But I would, I would recommend going ahead and then the work can be timed separately, you know?
Yeah, I think we go ahead. We will also be probably taking up a vote on the resolution for putting more money into the Bethesda Market Park, but I think we can handle both in the same night.
Okay. Rich? Joy?
Yeah, I agree. I, I've always hated that intersection, and I really applaud the work of the Public Services Committee and, and the staff. I know that probably took a ridiculous amount of time and effort. I, I walk that spot pretty frequently, and I'm looking forward to those improvements.
Thank you, Joy. Great. So I guess we will schedule a public hearing for July on this public improvement. And I thank you again for your time.
Thank you, thank you very much. And I also want to thank Dave Walton and Joe Cuthro for their incredible support and many late nights.
Many late nights. That's right. And we couldn't even feed them. We couldn't even feed them. We're the ones that were getting. All right. Great. Wonderful. So the next part of our agenda is a few updates. The first one is on the County Attainable Housing Strategies Initiative. Tomorrow, there'll be a public hearing, sorry, a public forum. I apologize. A public forum. The County Department Representative Lisa Gavoni is going to join us in this room and discuss the small scale, medium scale, and large scale recommendations to incorporate multifamily housing in single family neighborhoods. This will be a countywide initiative, but the focus of the forum will be what the impact will be on town lots specifically. It should be a great forum. The, tomorrow, the official transmittal of these recommendations will be, will occur from the planning board. I mean, if all goes as expected, the planning board is going to sign off on, on these recommendations, vote to, to transmit it over to the, yes, to, to the County Council for consideration. We understand that on the 19th, which is a Monday, I believe, 19th of June, I'm so sorry, not the 19th of June, the 24th of June, the planning board will be providing a summary of recommendations to the Planning, Planning Housing and Parks Committee of the County Council, which is headed up by Andrew Fritzen. And then it'll, they get that, that whole summer, summarization presentation. Then during the, the month of July, the County Council sub, sorry, the County Council Committee, PHP Committee, will have all its work sessions. So it's going to be very, very busy. They break for August and likely will introduce a ZTA in September. So this is going to happen.
And, and just be clear, the, because we've had this thought before, it was a possibility that the planning board, instead of making a concrete set of recommendations, but instead just give series of different options. But it sounds like they're making a specific set of recommendations for each housing type. Is that right?
The planning board came back to the planning department and said, not only are we going to offer all of these recommendations, but planning department, we want you to give a templatized ZTA as well. So a ZTA will be included in the recommendations report that goes to the County Council.
So they didn't even discuss the draft of the staff's. They just said, go ahead.
There's been a series of presentations over the last, you know, couple of months. That's why we've been able to send out those town priors. They focused on small scale, then we kicked out the small scale town prior and on and on. That's how they chunk, you know, chunked up the, the recommendations report. In fact, they went further than what the planning department had initially proposed. One example is the attainable housing optional method of development, the medium scale housing, going in 500 feet off of growth corridors was, to me, a last minute kind of change.
Who, who do we think was behind that change?
There are members of the planning board, two of them in particular, that are very much wanting to be as aggressive as possible with these recommendations. And they were accepted by the rest of the planning board.
So they didn't, but so that, that recommendation of widening that swath was not from the planning staff. It came from the planning board?
Came from the planning board to look at it for planning staff, to increase the number of lots that would be eligible for medium scale housing. The planning staff went back to the planning board saying, you asked us to do this. We looked at it and 500 feet in increases the R60 lots up to 13% of the lot, from 3% up to 13% of the lots in the county, for example, for R60. So there, it's unclear. You know, certainly we'll, we'll see during these work sessions in July, just how much of this is going to be palatable for the County Council Committee consideration. But this is, this is a very aggressive set of recommendations. But we'll find out more tomorrow and find out more what residents think. So that's all I have on that.
I think the, what, it'd be very interesting to hear tomorrow is really trying to suss out from our fellow residents where they draw a line. I think you're going to find a lot of people comfortable with something, very few people comfortable with the idea that there could be, you know, small scale apartment houses coming down their block. But trying to get some read on that continuum, I think, I'll be listening very closely to that.
What exactly at the end of this, after a year in the essence, what are we going to do with that feedback?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So what I would personally like to do is incorporate that feedback and, and develop a letter that gets sent to our representative, Andrew, as well as the rest of the council members that are on the PHP Committee before they start their July work session. So ideally, I'd like to get a letter crafted, you know, succinctly clear. It doesn't need to be six pages long. Considerations as you're going through these work sessions. Again, there will be a public hearing when all this, when the ZTA is introduced in the fall, and we'll of course have our, you know, opportunity for public testimony. But ideally, that's what I'd like to do with the feedback tomorrow. We've received a lot of feedback from residents have written in, like, I can't make it. Can you answer this question or whatever? That's still in and of itself, some good feedback.
Yeah, I mean, I just, we got to tell all of the tenants what we're going to do with this.
Absolutely. Yeah.
I would, is, Andrew isn't coming tomorrow, is he?
No, it's only Lisa Gavoni from the planning department.
I am, I mean, one thing I would, an idea I would plan in my colleague's head here is that we listen tomorrow and formulate the town's views, summarize the town's views with an eye honestly to saying more than, here are considerations you need to take into account. I, it would be great if we could get to the point where we have like a case to argue about what we think should happen that would be best for the town, not just flagging this, flagging that, you know? I think, I think the point has come where we are, we are going to need to.
Put pen to paper.
Yeah.
I think.
Here, we're your constituents. Here's what you should do. Yeah.
I think if I can, my thought about this, we'll hark back to the comments on the Bethesda Downtown Plan, which is now, unbelievably, eight years ago. We were effective because we had unity with other communities. We were not just the town of Chevy Chase. And I think to really, you know, I think, I agree, by the way, completely with what you just said, that we need to have a specific position. That, that is key. That's one of the lessons learned from the Downtown Plan. That just, just considerations, don't cut it. Here's, here's our position. Very clear. That's what they listen to. But the other is that we have to get other communities on board.
I agree.
If it's just us, forget about it. So it's all those, that just quadruples the amount of work because it's not just a matter of our getting our heads around this, but it's a matter of getting cooperative. Now, having said that, because we have resources and commitment, and also we have very good rapport with several of the other communities already, I don't think it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a plausible task to actually get a material amount of support. I don't know whether this could, how many communities wide, but certainly the remnants of the Cbar organization of communities around Bethesda, I think, will certainly pay attention. And we'll also see the value of a common front as distinct from their own individual letters.
Yeah. And are you saying this letter from right away in term, before the July meetings or the ones in, oh, boy?
I mean, it's a tiny affordable, but it's a lot of work, but.
Okay.
I think we'll have to meet with other, we'll have to meet with other communities. I think that at a minimum, we need to have some organizational discussions with East Bethesda, with Chevy Chase North, with, so, I guess, West Side of Bethesda.
Is the list of people that you have for the state discussion, is that not useful?
That's too large.
Every, yeah.
No, no, I mean.
No, I, effectively, effectively, when we were meeting during Thrive Montgomery 2050, we still have that list of, now, some people have left and other people have moved in, but there's a list to start, a list of contacts to start with. It will be extremely difficult to get sign off on a, a letter that is one, you know, look kind of like one letter, this is how we feel, and it's signed off. The other part is judging from what happened with Thrive Montgomery. I, we crafted a letter that was effectively signed by 25 organizations that represented 25% of the population in the county, and the County Council did not read it. So I'm more of an advocate of sharing what it is that our position is and saying, hey, lift whatever you'd like from it and craft, craft your own letter, but get your letters in. And that, that's something that's in their hands.
I think that's fine, too. I mean, but, sorry, go ahead.
Please, no, I didn't mean to cut you off. Please go ahead.
No.
Oh, you're offended. Okay. I don't think we have to go too far down that road how we handle it tonight. I think what we should, I would recommend is that we do ask for a meeting with some of our sister communities and just put our heads together about it and see where we come out. We might find there's a, we get to a common position quickly. On the other hand, we may end up saying, no, we won't be able to do that, in which case, we just go ahead with our own. But I think getting a sense of reaction of other communities would be helpful and see what they can do.
Okay.
Yeah, no, Irene, you've done a stupendous amount of work on this. So thank you for what you've been doing.
You're welcome.
What are the benefits of being mayor, Irene?
There you go. So speaking of which, the second topic is the technical amendment to state law to clarify the municipal, municipal building authority. We had a meeting on Monday with our D18 state legislators, and we're joined by a number of municipalities, some that do have their own zoning authority and some that do not, going over a technical amendment that in truth, this issue has been discussed on and off since 2020. So, but in earnest, it's been about six months. So the way it was left was there was some, a concern by one of the state legislators that, you know, this was kind of a cute way for municipalities to enact building regulations that would inhibit or impede the, the construction of multifamily housing, no matter what, you know, they might feel that we're being very transparent and open, that that's not the case. There might be other municipalities that might feel differently. So with all that being said, there was a, a nice suggestion made by Delegate Solomon on how to kind of get around that. I've crafted a letter. I've sent you all the letter. I've received feedback from Barney, which has been helpful. And if you all have any comments about that letter, I'd be great, very, very grateful if you could go, get those to me as soon as possible. What I'd like to do is, or what we agreed to, as the state legislators asked, is to craft a letter that would be signed on by all of these different municipalities that would be impacted in Montgomery County and that would go far. At the same time, we'll reach out to the Director of the Planning Department and see where, where he's at still, which is a delicate dance all around, but I think still doable. But what I want to do is get that letter to them next week so that it allows their councils to, A, provide any additional feedback, suggestions, whatever. They have already said they won't vote on this themselves until September.
September.
So let's get the ball rolling.
By whose day, the?
The individual municipalities, because they're off for the summer.
Well, I, some of them. I think there are others that said they, they won't meet in August. But I think most of them have July meetings. So if you get the letter out next week, I think there's a chance that some of them could take it up in June.
Unless there's a lot of comments.
Of course. But I, but I think they'd all understand, the sooner there was backing for it, the better.
I thought I did send you comments, but I, I haven't seen Barney. But the only, the only, and this will be my comment to you, is that the, was it the town manager of, I forgot what.
Chevy Chase Village. Shana.
Yeah, Shana, thank you. Made, made remarks that was, that said, this is not about discriminatory practice. And it was that, I, I thought that was a very, very cogent statement that, that wasn't in the letter, that, so that we could, you know, we affirmatively say, you know, that we're, we're, we don't, we don't object to the idea of increasing, you know, you know, that we're, we're, we don't, we don't object to the idea of increasing, you know, and it's, and it is not, we're, we're not trying to be discriminatory. We're trying to be not discriminatory by doing this. I thought that was a really nice statement that we could insert. They kind of get at the lady, that the one delegate who was, you know, saying, you guys are just an elitist community and you're just doing this to.
Well, I think what, what, what the language that's in the letter does, which follows what Jared Solomon proposed, is that taking out the word uniform, because that delegate was concerned that uniform would lock regulations in forever. Instead, there was feeling of, well, wait a minute, if a municipality decides to have more lenient setbacks for multifamily, they should be allowed to do that. So the way the language is crafted makes clear that we couldn't do anything more restrictive.
Right.
But it doesn't prohibit anybody from doing something which, if they were more lenient.
Yes.
But I, it doesn't say that explicitly in that way, but that's what the language means when you.
Yeah, that's fine. So that, that was my only comment.
Version that has a little bit more to that leniency thing. So, yeah, so we'll have to look at that again. That was your comment there. Okay. So Joy and Stephanie, if you do have any additional comments, some incorporating this stuff, I'll listen to Shayna's comment again and make sure that that's put in. And, and then get a, get another version out to you, hopefully Friday or something like that.
Okay.
So, and so whatever you got for me, send it in tomorrow, if you wouldn't mind. Thank you, thank you. And the county growth and infrastructure policy, so that's also going on. The county growth and infrastructure policy back in the day was known as the subdivision staging policy. It's a, a part of the planning department, a group of the planning department where they're, they're determining what are the adequacy tests when it comes to road, schools and other public infrastructure, your water, your sewer, things like that. So as the county is obviously promoting additional density and everything along with it, development, let's make sure that, that the, that the public infrastructure is keeping up with all of that. The, the person who happens to be in charge of the County Attainable Housing Strategy Initiative, Small Scale, is also working on the county growth and infrastructure policy, Lisa Gavoni. So tomorrow, it will be interesting to see which hat she puts on with respect to all the questions that we imagine are going to come up around school capacity, transportation, things like that. Anyway, there, that, she's working with, with another person in planning. They're planning, I'm sorry, excuse me, they're going to be presenting in front of the planning board tomorrow about impact taxes when it comes to the just development efforts. There's, if, if you, if you construct a single family home versus a multifamily versus a bigger building, there's different impact tax fees associated with it. And that's the group that determines what's going to be, what's, who's going to be charged what. So they're presenting impact taxes tomorrow to the planning board. And by the end of July, the plane, by August 1st, the planning board has to sign off on the growth and infrastructure policy and transmit that to the county council. The county council takes all of August off, which means that they won't put this, get this together until September. But by law, they have to vote on this by November 15th. So this is also going to be happening this fall. The, the, the long range planning committee is going to be having their presentation of, you know, what, what sort of impacts are there from a Bethesda standpoint on the growth and infrastructure policy? That, that's specific to us, if you will. That meeting will take place on the 20th of June, one week from tomorrow, I believe. And I don't know how many of you all are, are planning to attend. It is obviously a public meeting. But I just wanted to put it on your calendar if, if you wanted to attend. It's, it's the 20th is a Thursday. Yeah. So long range planning is Joy. And were you going to be out of town? You won't be there. You won't, you won't, you won't be there. Okay. And then Stephanie, were you thinking of? Okay. So Joy and I will be in attendance in that meeting. I think, yeah, it's another in-person meeting. And that's next Thursday. I'll report that out or.
Make one comment on this. And something else I've been involved in a lot in the past, this is a particularly thankless task. It is really, really difficult to affect this policy.
Yeah.
It's countywide. The metrics are all set out to be countywide. And it's, I've just never found that we've gotten any traction or footing, even working with some other communities in this vicinity. And then some other communities and some people in those communities pay attention to this very closely, like Katcha Martin in, in East Bethesda. It's just never gone anywhere. So just, just my sense in terms of, you know, our, our square of capacity. That, that what you've focused on so far, which has to do with multifamily housing is absolutely vital. Being able to have, obviously getting a clarity on our town authority, that's vital, too. I think we can have some say in the Bethesda minor master plan amendment. But I think the chances of having any success on changes in this, the, the growth and infrastructure policy are very low. So just in terms of calibration of effort, I just want to offer that.
Yeah, one of the big thing, thank you Barney, one of the big aspects of, of why, and I don't mean to fit words into your mouth, why this is actually true is that Bethesda is considered a red zone when it comes to transportation. And what that means is the county does not mind if there are traffic jams. The county does not mind at all. They, they, if you are trying to get from the town and go to downtown Bethesda and it takes you a half an hour to do so, they, it does not matter. There is nothing there. So we. That's what you should expect, because the focus is on instead the pedestrian bicyclist safety and, and which definitely is important, but I think you're going to hear a lot tomorrow during the attainables housing strategies initiative, that parking, transportation, we can only take, they're going to cut through our streets. There's going to be a lot of those discussions and the county does not, that's not their focus to solve that.
I don't necessarily disagree with that. I mean, you, if you decide to purchase in an urban setting, that's what you're buying.
That's exactly right.
You're buying, you're buying not, not easy private vehicle transportation.
Yeah.
You just, you just expect.
Having said that, when we come up with ideas such as three lanes on Leland going to Wisconsin, that make eminent a good sense. We should find a channel to get those on the table and not, not feel like, why do you, well, it doesn't matter.
So for the minor, a good segue into the minor master plan amendment. That was also scheduled to be presented to the planning board tomorrow. That's been taken off the agenda and I believe it's next week. The 20th, maybe. Maybe it's the 27th, whatever it is, it's been postponed. However, the actual scope of work has already been, had been posted, because I lifted it off before it got deleted off the agenda. So there, they're too, too quick, for whatever reason, because it was, it was the attainable housing strategies. It was the growth infrastructure policy and this all in one. And they were, they were talking about other things. It was just a portion of the agenda. So the focus, which is like that, the, the kind of the scope of work is what they are presenting on, the planning department. And the scope of work is the implementation strategy. What's the implementation strategy, given the county's economic development policies, park development policies, transportation, schools, affordable housing, and the development of a community, community recreation center. The intent here is to, those have already been defined, in some cases by the growth infrastructure policy or other master plan or, you know, whatever, within that, within that sphere of influence, what is it that can be done specifically as relates to this minor master plan amendment? They will answer the, attempt to answer the questions, is the development cap necessary? Does it need to be raised or should there be an alternate approach? Not, not a surprise question. How do we ensure that, ensure public infrastructure can support future goals? What are the top priorities for improvements? So they're already saying, yeah, we know that we promised all this, but what are the real top priorities? And is the PIP strategy still accurate, still right? They are not looking to increase the PIP at all. We already asked that question when we met with Elza, Joy and Rich and I were in that meeting a couple Saturdays ago. Very, very hesitant to kind of right size what that, what that amount should be per square foot for the additional density. But that's the scope of work and that's all the presentation is going to be on the 27th during the course of this.
Just make sure I understand. It's only going to be outlining the scope of work to be undertaken.
This summer, yeah.
There will not be anything about conclusions.
That is correct. That will be this summer. So.
So we'll take a breather.
They'll take a breather. In September, they're going to present the presentations to, sorry, the recommendations to the planning board. The planning board is going to have a public hearing and then turn it over to the council, county council by the winter, which is likely January-ish. So everything is going to be very quick. For, for you all to know, the forecast for July, I'm going really, really uber policy wonk and I'm explaining all three things in the, to say, it's happening. Like I can't, it's terrible timing for summer vacations and all of this, but it's happening and it's happening quick. So.
I've just, I've been thinking a little bit about all these things and what we give a bargain. Discussion about the growth of infrastructure policy. What we could actually do is one of the things I think at the end of tomorrow's meeting. We need to make it clear to you that, you know, we'll do what we can, but they need to do something themselves. I mean, they need to write as, you know, as citizens to the planning board, to the county council, to their delegates, their, their, because we, yeah. We've only got so much to handle to work with.
Yeah.
They can struggle about it. Don't just show us.
Yeah.
Good point.
It's just another thing I, the body.
Yes, it's going to be a fascinating meeting. Yeah, yeah.
It's a radical idea to actually have a meeting in person, by the way.
Yes.
And it won't be, it won't be hybrid. So we'll see how many people actually are willing to come down here and actually.
I think it's, yeah. The, that's where we're going to be presenting, because there's going to be a, the slideshow. So it'll be oriented. Yes. So the podium and I'm going to bring a stool from home because apparently we don't have a stool here. And the two of us are going to be up front and all the chairs are going to be facing that way. Yes. You're, you're okay to be sitting in chairs on the front row? Okay.
I mean, we'll be, we'll be an audience or should we be sitting at the side? I guess that's the question.
We can pull chairs out.
I don't know. I, I mean, I need to think about that.
Well, whatever you want to do.
Discussion.
I, I would, you're making a very good point, Rich. I'd actually like for the four of us or three of us, yes, because Joy will have to participate virtually, but three of us to be sitting in chairs or over in that side. I'm sorry.
There's no virtual.
Oh, no virtual at all. Okay. So the three of us to be at the side. So I'd like to be able to look and see the residents as they're speaking, rather than being in the audience itself. Yeah, right.
Okay.
That's good.
No, that's, that's great. Thank you for asking that. But that's the way, I believe this room will be filled.
And if Lisa makes any mistakes in her presentation, Irene will correct her.
Okay. I think we accomplished a lot tonight. Thank you for your time, your attention, your energy.
Thank you, Deborah. We like an audience.
All right. Thanks a lot. Take care.
All right.